I just wanted to do that. Evening, everyone. Welcome. The July 17th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is called to order. I am Scott Alupka, Chair of the Board. We will start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Lilly?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant. Almost a full one. Will you now please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Reminder, Board members, please remember to unmute your microphones when you are speaking and to mute it when you are finished. Ms. Bensley, any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes.
In the July 10th email, you received draft minutes from the June 17th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item up for discussion is we have the opportunity to discuss and then vote on the cycle zoning petition for reclassification for 8635-8641 Lockhaven Boulevard, 1703-1705 East Joppa Road, case number R-2025-0050. As a reminder, this item was introduced to the Board on June 5th with a presentation by Ms. Manteg, of the Department of Planning, and a public hearing on the matter was held on June 17. Staff from the Department of Planning are present tonight to answer any questions we may have as we discuss this motion. Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Manteg, do you have anything to add before we open the floor up for discussion?
I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let me also note for the record that Mr. Tennant has now joined us, so full house. I will now open the floor up for discussion. Any Board members have any discussions about the issue?
Questions, Scott?
Sure.
So we got noticed that since we last met, that the Board of Appeals determined that there was no technical drafting error, correct?
That's correct.
So, there's two things that we need to look at. Substantial change to the area and that the classification of the property was established in error. So does the Board of Appeals take away the second part of what we need to look at because they've already determined that there was no technical error?
That's a great question. I'm not sure that we've seen clear definitions about what the error would include. Certainly, the Board has decided that there was no error in the drafting and leaving this one parcel out of the issue. So, in some regards, I think you could say, yes, they have already determined there was no error, at least in the filing of six tax years or four.
So, I wanted to thank Taylor and Director Lafferty and the staff for catching me up since I didn't miss the last Planning Board meeting and I watched the minutes and everything and I watched the video. But on what Mr. Heckman said, I'm not sure if Mr. Vittori or his client, I mean, do you have anything additional that you can show the Board that shows there was actually a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, Jason Vittori, Smith, Gildean Schmidt. As far as the documentation we submitted, is it, I don't have anything additional. I've only, I haven't submitted anything, as far as I know, to the Planning Department in addition. I think to answer, just really feedback to Mr. Heckman's question, there's completely different code section that deals with corrections of zoning maps and one of a number of items that, on there that he's saying is a technical drafting error. It's not defined what constitutes a technical drafting error, but I can tell you there's no case law on that. I know from that case that went to the Board of Appeals, there was one instance where that was utilized and it's an unreported decision, I think, out of the Circuit Court, but in no means that doesn't count as precedent. There are numbers of cases dealing with reclassification, which we're here before, on changed mistake and as far as the changed mistake standard and the change in the neighborhood and the mistake or error standard, they're used synonymously, it's an either/or instance. As far as with respect, and then with those two findings, the Board who makes an actual finding, in the code, it only has, you guys make a recommendation, doesn't say about what or what the standard is. Ultimately, the Board of Appeals is going to make findings of fact and conclusions of law as to whether there was, one, a change in the neighborhood or an error or mistake and, two, additional findings laid out in Baltimore County Code, Section 32, 3, 5, 10. I think it's subsection B and it's a number of considerations you make. So as far as what is being considered, there was number one off the top of my head, if we're to pull that up, we could read through it all together because I think that's applicable, that if you were to give some direction to the Board of Appeals, they would benefit from actually going through the criteria that they're going to go through. The first one is population trends. I don't have any, I know in general Baltimore County has stayed stagnant. If anything, our population has gone down. I think part of that is housing. Housing has been an issue. There aren't affordable options for people to stay here, so younger generations are taking jobs elsewhere where they can get more affordable housing. I don't want to retry the whole case here, but that is certainly one of the things, as far as the next criteria, it's adequate public facilities. I think with the Master Plan 2030, you guys exhaustively have heard, you've got, we're trying to do nodes and areas where we're focusing development to take place. This is certainly one of those areas that I think you would find there are adequate public facilities that can accommodate additional density in this area. The BM CCC zone that the Councilman approved and you, the Planning Board, again, recommended in the CZMP, whether you knew this little sliver was in or not, wasn't there. So as far as what those criteria are, they're laid out in the county code. There's not any data. I can tell you the Starbucks across the street closed down, there's a Sonic up the road that has closed down. This area has been hit a lot by keeping the zoning the way it is and use is just not working out.
Mr. Chairman, all due respect, this is not retrying the hearing that we had. We've already had a public hearing and Mr. Vittori is using this opportunity to basically testify about matters that he did not speak to during the public hearing.
Mr. Vittori was allotted three minutes at a public hearing, that's not really much of a public hearing.
Well, that's the way the rules are, Mr. Vittori, you know that very well.
I don't know where that rule is codified anywhere. No, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Brophy's question.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, all the technical language, I think that's going to be hard to disseminate who's right and who's wrong on that. My main question is, for your client, do you feel like they submitted the proper documentation or did they have an opportunity to resubmit it? I mean, how do you feel about the process on there and did they do their due diligence?
So, you know, again, I want to rehash entirely what we went through. I'm sure most of you either were here and listened to it the first time or heard it on a recording. We didn't file all three parcels. There were three parcels that are owned by our client. Our client told us this address, 8635 Lockhaven Boulevard, 1731 East Joppa Road. If you type those two things in "my neighborhood," you get two parcels. There's an additional parcel that doesn't have a numerical number assigned to it because it's part of the same building. So that was left out because we ask our clients, and I think most people that file these things and Ms. Brophy, I know, and it's my understanding, in her profession, she would say, "Give me an ALTA survey that lays it out." I know the nice folks that work in planning that check us in when we file these things, say, "Can you provide an ALTA survey?" And we didn't do that. We just had the addresses. I did the best I could on behalf of my client despite having asked for an ALTA survey, given the limited time we have. We filed it the way we did. There was no deviant methodology to try to get around, including this. I would 100% tell you that if this property were included, the entire thing would have been rezoned and we wouldn't be here today. Had that not having happened, we're here today. And it's either wait four years or we find that there was a mistake or error or a change in the neighborhood. I don't want to go through what those rationales are again, but those are the two criteria you can fit this in. I know I've read all the case law and I argued my point about it, but that's going to happen at the Board of Appeals. I don't want to...
Other questions?
I think it's a unfortunate situation. I think that from my vantage, when I went back and I watched the work session for this property, and I think to me, as someone who kind of deals with these things, when I listened to what Mr. Warren said when he pointed out that there was, this was not addressed. So something was missed in that work session where it's clear that someone should have been paying attention to that portion of the property and I don't know how that gets missed, you know, when it's brought up in the work session. I think that's my major issue.
So, if at the work session, if we didn't know and then we looked at it and found it, there's still no recourse. You're in the process. There's a window within which you can file it and that's the year before we kind of get to that point. It's when the filing periods are for the petitioners or some guy in Russia that wants to file it for your property or wherever. And it got missed in that window. Had we caught it or somebody pointed it out or we figured it out after the fact, it could have been picked up then again by the Planning Department or Planning Board's window or the Council's window. None of that happened. It got figured out after the fact, even though it was pointed out by Mr. Warren, as you said, at the work session. I had a specific recollection of it. I didn't go back and watch the video, but I was here, so I remember it and that's where we are. But ultimately, having read all the case law, whether there's a mistake or an error doesn't say you left something out, you, you know, what it clearly says is you can't second guess what the Council did. In this case, what we have is the Councilman saying, "Had this been included, had there not been an error of this not being included, I would have rezoned it and I support it being rezoned." So if we're trying to guess what the Councilman thinks, we don't really have to. It's in writing.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Heinel? Oh, sorry. Not hearing any. Does someone want to make a motion?
So be it moved that the Planning Board does not support the rezoning request for cycle zoning, cycle 1, 2025, petition for reclassification for 8635-28641 Lockhaven Boulevard, slash 1703 to 1705 East Joppa Road, case number R-2025-0050. Recommends adoption of the Department of Planning Cycle Zoning Reclassification Petition Report dated June 5th, 2025, and recommends Board of Appeals Schedule Hearings on the Matter During Period Four of the Cycle, September to December 2025, in order to render a decision by December 31st, 2025, as outlined in the Baltimore County Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, oh, yes, Ms. Muneses.
If this goes to the Board of Appeals, will there be a chance for the public to voice their opinion before December 31st, 2025?
I don't believe so, but I don't know.
So, I actually asked Ms. Bensley this, so thank you for answering that, Taylor. It does have, it's like a court case and people testify and then the public does have a chance to speak. So I did ask that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I will do a roll call vote. So that, again, the motion as moved is to not support the rezoning request. Mr. Ray?
Say yes, not to support.
Mr. Bratty?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lilly?
Yes.
Ms. Muneses?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Tennant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. That concludes this issue. Other business, report from the July 10th, 2025 meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission. Ms. Bensley will fill us in on the major actions on the July 10th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At their July 10th, 2025 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue six certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Connolly property located at 704 Woodland Drive-In Relay, Prime Plus Property Group LLC property located at 9317 Belair Road in Nottingham, the Paloo, Paloo property located at 322 Central Avenue in Glendon, the Todd property located at 11825 Reynolds Road in Kingsville, the Glendon Bank Romee property located at 4817 Butler Road in Glendon, and the Rodney House, the Margrig LLC property located at 14943 York Road in Sparks, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. We will now get a report on recent Council legislation of interest to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 3925, additions to the Baltimore County Final Landmarks List for the purpose of adding a new landmark to the final historical landmarks list and generally relating to the Baltimore County Historical Landmarks List. The site is Perry Hall School and Setting located at 9317 Belair Road in Nottingham. Bill 40-25, zoning regulations, assisted living facilities, conversion of existing commercial commercially-used or zoned buildings for the purpose of permitting an existing commercially-used or zoned building of a certain age and located in certain areas to be converted for use as an assisted living facility, establishing certain development requirements for such a building and generally relating to assisted living facilities. Bill 4125, zoning regulations, residential development proposals in the Honey Go Overlay District for the purpose of authorizing certain development tracks in the Honey Go Overlay District to be developed with residential uses under certain conditions and generally relating to residential development in the Honey Go Overlay District. Bill 4225, zoning regulations, out-of-water storage facilities for commercial fishing and shell fishing operations for the purpose of permitting the storage of certain equipment related to commercial fishing or shell fishing operations under certain conditions and generally relating to out-of-water storage and commercial fishing or shell fishing operations. Say that 10 times, Matt. Resolution 3125, amending the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. The County Council has identified one area along the eastern side of Belair Road, south of Robb Avenue and north of Silver Spring Road that has excellent redevelopment potential to be added to the district. Additionally, the County Council has identified two areas of land at the southernmost and northernmost areas of the district that have not effectively utilized the program and therefore should be removed. The boundary of the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District is now amended as shown on Exhibit A. Resolution 3225, amending the Cowington Ebenezer Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Cowington Ebenezer CRD. The County Council has identified one area along the northern side of Cowington Avenue that has excellent redevelopment potential to be added to the district. Additionally, the County Council has identified two areas of land at the southernmost and northernmost areas of the district that have not effectively utilized the program and therefore should be removed. The boundary is now amended as shown in Exhibit A. And finally, Resolution 3325, review of PUD, the enclave at Magnolia. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to approve the review of a planned, of a proposed planned unit development in accordance with county law. Moore's Legacy LLC has submitted an application for review and approval of a 10-acre site located at 8745 Gerst Avenue in Perry Hall. The Perry Hall area of the Fifth Council Manic District to be developed as a general development, planned unit development PUD known as the enclave at Magnolia. The site is a single-tax parcel, Zone DR1, and is located entirely within the Erdle. The applicant proposes to develop the PUD site with 28 single-family detached homes and a 1-acre open space area. The applicant proposes a capital improvement benefit in the amount of $28,000 to be contributed towards a capital project identified by the council member in whose district the proposed PUD is located and the Perry Hall Improvement Association. Additionally, the applicant proposes to pursue approvals to construct a road connection to Magnolia Avenue, which will prevent any additional traffic from utilizing Gerst Avenue, and that concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bensley. This is the conclusion of our regular agenda. A reminder, we will reconvene for a public hearing at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Board meeting?
Motion.
Second. All those approved?
Aye.
Stick around, we'll be back in a couple minutes. Hearing on the cycle 43, water supply and sewerage master plan amendments. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy is gone. Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Lilly?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero has left. Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant?
Aye.
Thank you. The cycle 43, water supply and sewerage master plan amendments were introduced at the June 17th, 2025 Board meeting with a presentation by Mr. Andrew Brown of the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Tonight, Mr. Brown is here to further present the items to the Board. Following his presentation, Board members will have a chance to ask questions. We will then have the opportunity to hear from their representatives for the petitions and accept public testimony on the matters. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Brown.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Brown and I am civil engineer and project manager with the Department of Public Works in Transportation. I'm here to present the staff report for the annual water supply and sewerage plan amendments for cycle 43. This year, we received three petitions as shown on the public notice. This public notice was posted around the county office building, in the Baltimore Sun and the Daily Record, and was included in a press release in compliance with the 1990 executive order. Now, before I give an overview of the petitions and staff recommendations, I wanted to point you to the list of definitions for all the water and sewerage map designations. These definitions are also included in the submitted staff report on page eight for your reference. And with that, let's take a look at the petitions. The first petition of cycle 43, petition 2501, is for the property located at 3117 Rice's Lane, located south of the intersection of Windsor Mill Road and Rice's Lane in Windsor Mill, Maryland, as shown on the aerial image. Property is zone RC5 and RC6, rural residential and rural conservation and residential, and is currently used as an Islamic center. Existing facilities are on private onsite well and septic and the petitioner is proposing a water and sewer connection to the existing mains in Windsor Mill Road adjacent to the property. And now note that there is an existing sewer pump station on the other side of Windsor Mill Road near the property. Now here, you'll see two maps showing the water and sewer designation. Next slide, please. Two maps showing the water and sewer designations for 3117 Rice's Lane. The majority of the property is located just outside of the urban-rural demarcation line with the exception of a small sliver along Windsor Mill Road. The nearby Erdle is shown as a red dashed line on these maps. The entire property is within the Metropolitan District and the current water and sewerage map designations are W7 and S7, no planned service. The petitioner is requesting the water designation be changed to W6, area of future consideration, and the sewer designation be changed to S1, existing service area. The petitioner intends to connect existing facilities and future development projects to public water and sewer. Connection is being proposed via the, via construction of a new water and sewer line along Rice's Lane to make connections with the existing water and sewer mains located in Windsor Mill Road. The petition was reviewed by the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, Department of Planning, and the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Analysis and recommendations from each of the departments for each of these petitions can be found in Sections B, C, and D in the staff report, starting on page 120. Recommendations for petition 25-01 are as follows. The Department of Environment, Protection, and Sustainability had no objections to the proposed change, given the proximity of the property to existing public water and sewer and the long-term environmental benefits of connecting to public sewer. The department specifically noted that a public sewer connection would reduce nitrogen pollution, thus reducing the cost of Baltimore County's TMDL obligations by $59,600. The Department of Planning recommended that the water and sewer designations remain unchanged based on the property's location, zoning, and the guiding policies of the Master Plan 2030. The Department of Public Works and Transportation had no objection to the requested designation changes based on the property's location within the Metropolitan District and the technical feasibility of public connections to the existing public water and sewer mains. The department did note that there were no plans for a capital improvement project in this area and the installation of water and sewer mains along Rice's Lane would be at the owner's expense. All right, our second petition, number 25-02, is for the property located at 3499 Sweet Air Road, which is south of the intersection of Sweet Air Road and Jarrettsville Pike in Jacksonville, Maryland. The property is zoned BL, business local, and is currently used as a commercial shopping center hosting a variety of businesses such as a grocery store, a pharmacy, food services, bank, office space, and other businesses. The center also provides onsite fire protection, protection water for Jacksonville, Long Green, and Kingsville volunteer fire companies. Facilities located on the property are served by private onsite sewage disposal systems and a combination of onsite and off-site private wells. Limited well yield has resulted in the import of trucked water to supply the existing facilities. The property is located outside of the urban-rural demarcation line beyond the Erdle by about three miles and is also outside of the Metropolitan District. The current water and sewerage map designations are W7 and S7, no planned service. The petitioner is requesting the water designation be changed to W3, capital facilities area, noting that adjoining properties also have a W3 designation. Due to ongoing water supply issues, the petitioner is requesting a water designation change to authorize access to public water service and to serve the existing facilities. No specific method of public water supply or location for a public water connection was proposed. Now for the staff recommendations. The Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability recommended that the county conduct a feasibility study to look at the costs and potential service area prior to approving designation changes, excuse me, given the overall groundwater concerns in Jacksonville and the likelihood that other property owners in the area may also have interest in a connection to a public water supply. The Department of Planning did not support the request to change to W3, noting the property's considerable distance from the Metropolitan District line and its location outside of the Erdle. The Department of Public Works and Transportation did not support a change to the water designation and recommended that the property retain the current designation due to its location outside of the Metropolitan District, noting that there are currently no plans for a capital improvement project in the area. All right, and for our third and final petition for cycle 43, it's petition number 25-03 for the property at 8400 Park Heights Avenue, located between Park Heights Avenue and Green Tree Road in Pikesville, Maryland. The property consists of two parcels zoned RC5, rural residential, and DR35, density residential. Property is currently used as a private men's school for grades nine and above. The facilities on the property are served by public water via an 8-inch FM meter from Green Tree Road and onsite private septic system. The petitioner is proposing a sewer connection to existing mains west of the property at either Clifton Court or Green Tree Road. The property is located just outside of the urban-rural demarcation line, shown as a dashed red line on the maps, and is within the Metropolitan District. The current water and sewerage map designations are W7 and S7, no planned service. The petitioner is requesting the water designation be changed to W1, existing service area, and the sewer designation be changed to S1, existing service area, or S3, capital facilities area. The petitioner is seeking the ability to add future facilities such as a gymnasium and other building and amenities for the students and staff. The petitioner is requesting the water designation change on the basis that the property is already being served by public water and asserting that the current W7 classification is in error. The petitioner has proposed making a connection to public sewer to the west of the property across Green Tree Road at Clifton Court or to the south of the property via a private sewer line that serves the Valley Gate subdivision in sewer line that serves the Valley Gate subdivision, and will ultimately connect a public sewer at Green Tree Road to the southwest. Both sewer locations would likely require the use of pumping. Staff recommendations are as follows. Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability had no objections to the requested change, noting the existing water connection and the environmental benefits of replacing the septic system with the public sewer connection. The department specifically noted that a public sewer connection would reduce nitrogen pollution, thus reducing the cost of Baltimore County's T M D L obligations by seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. The Department of Planning did not oppose the request due to the property's location within the Metropolitan District and it being currently served by public water. And the Department of Public Works and Transportation also had no objection to requested sewer designation change due to the technical feasibility of the connection to nearby existing sewer mains. The department supported the water designation change because the property has existing water service. And this concludes my presentation of the amendment petitions and staff reports for cycle forty-three. Thank you. Twenty-five oh two. So. Are you are you asking for a specific department recommendation? Oh, why the planning did not support it? So I they their writing was basically its its location outside of the urdle and Metropolitan District, but I can certainly defer to Mr. LaFerty if he would like to offer a more robust explanation. Okay.
Rice's Lane. How far is that location actually from the urdle and the water connection?
So that property is, and if you can go back to the slide, you might be able to see it there, twenty-five oh one. It butts the urdle. It basically runs along the urdle, it's right on the edge there. And then the water connection, it's the address is off of Rice's Lane, which is runs perpendicular, but the the road that you can see where the basically the the urdle follows, that's Windsor Mill, and that road has existing water service. So the water surface is adjacent to the property, but they would likely run water lines in that perpendicular road up to Windsor Mill. Certainly.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, Charles Segerman with C M R Engineering, representing three one one seven Rice's Lane, the Randalls Town Islamic Center. As was pointed out, it's right on the corner of Windsor Mill and Rice's Lane. There is an existing water line in Windsor Mill Road. There's a pump station at the intersection, and there's also a gravity manhole in front of the pump station. We're on high ground, so we could make it to the gravity manhole. And to allay the planning department's concern, we could run these lines on our property and just make lateral connections to the existing infrastructure if there was concern about future upzoning. The background is the address three one one seven. There's an existing twelve-inch line that's a suitable size, the existing pumping station. We are adjacent to the urdle, but we are inside the Metropolitan District boundary. I just graphically wanted to show you where the property is. It's kind of frustrating because we're literally on the wrong side of the road. If we were on the other side, we would have all these services. I did do a sketch kind of showing a private connection, both water and sewer, so it's technically feasible sizes there. No network upgrades are really needed, and we don't believe any pressures and modifications would be needed either. Again, wanted to point out that we are inside the Metropolitan District, so, you know, if the board found, we should be allowed to make this connection. So the center is trying to do a master plan. In the meantime, there is a current plan of a a teaching facility and athletic facility, a two-story structure. Maryland regs require a separate septic reserve area for every building. We just did perk for the second building on the site, and we actually did fail, which, you know, is a concern in talking to groundwater management. They are wary of the soils, so, you know, I think I was glad to hear that they're supporting our case. We're going back and testing really the last area that's available to the site, but these are limiting factors, you know, with onsite water and sewer systems. Also, the fire marshal would like us to have a fire hydrant. That clearly is difficult without a public system. It requires a large water tank to be put onsite somewhere in the area of about thirty thousand gallons, and that would have to be repeated for every structure. So we're really trying to support our client with a long-term way in order for them to be confident in their long-term planning and fundraising. Again, we're not proposing any density changes. We believe the property is in parity with other properties in the area, and again, just want to be able to support our client in a long-term phase development for their site. We believe that what we're proposing is an efficient use of county infrastructure, supports equity and utility access. It is, I think, a preferable method environmentally in that we're reducing the nutrients. Ben's Run is right behind the property, and so again, we prefer not to have septic systems that, you know, if failing, could transmit nutrients to Ben's Run. And then well systems also, you know, take water out of the aquifer. So again, public water would be preferable. And I think I just kind of repeated my notes there. I appreciate your time. I'm happy to take.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I do not see any. Thank you for your.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that we can make these connections without being in the right of way and upzoning the entire area. That's the preferred routing for the for the committee.
I think you dropped one of your notes. Next, we will hear from someone regarding petition twenty-five oh two for thirty-four ninety-nine Sweet Air Road.
Hi, I'm Patricia Farley, and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to you today and explain why Manor Center should be designated W three. This is Manor Center, not yet. This is Manor Center, and as the sign says, we've been serving the Jacksonville community in Baltimore County since nineteen seventy-eight. This area was known as Four Corners back then, and the surrounding area was mostly farms, when my father and his partners built this one hundred and five thousand square foot shopping center. Once the original anchor tenants were secured, Safeway, Reed's Pharmacy, Seven-Eleven, Bank of American, McDonald's, local residents, open businesses there to serve other needs. Manor Center remains a family business today. My family owns and manages it, and most of our tenants are locally owned businesses and merchants serving our community. For almost fifty years, Manor's been the economic engine of the community and a very good neighbor. We supply the water for local fire departments in our water storage towers, which helps keep insurance rates down for our neighbors. B G N E posts a command center in our parking lot in the event of power outages and emergencies, which happen way too often. During COVID, Safeway and Walgreens and the others were other stores were all labeled essential and open for business, and I think the community appreciated Manor Center even more. This shot will orient us a little bit better. Manor is eight miles from Hunt Valley and five miles from Lock Raven Reservoir. Water has always been an issue in Jacksonville, in part because of the Lock Raven shifts on which it is built. My father and his partners knew the geology when they built the center. However, they had no real concept of its fragility. The county deemed they're well sufficient for the Manor Center's needs in nineteen seventy-eight. Back then, Manor Center was permitted to withdraw thirteen thousand gallons per day. Today, we are permitted to withdraw nine thousand. We've been through a lot since then with the Exxon spill in nineteen eighty-five, which I'll show you on another after this is over, and then another huge spill in two thousand and six, as well as a great deal of development throughout the area. This has impacted the water available from all the wells. Which brings us to why we are here today. This is Manor Center in orange. The properties with W three designation are all in blue. As you can see, all the businesses adjoining Manor Center are W three, as well as many of the homes. Although I'm not sure when the designations were formulated, Manor Center was originally designated W three. We also know the center was designated W three in the comprehensive master plan in nineteen ninety-two. I've researched this myself extensively, and I can't for the life of me tell you why or when this designation for Manor Center was changed from W three to W seven. But we need that W three designation back. We understand that W three designation does not necessarily mean that the county will ever provide public water to the area, but if the county does bring water to Jacksonville, Manor Center needs to have access to it and should enjoy the same rights to the water as our neighbors in blue, business and residential. Manor Center's long-term viability depends on that. This next slide, please. This this slide illustrates more of the issues about the water supply at Manor, which is outlined in orange. The blue circles are wells, wells which are permitted but are best marginal. And the twenty-three red squares are all places we have drilled for water without success. Baltimore County has been sensitive to the water quantity problems in the area and has been helpful. In twenty twenty-four, the county permitted Manor to drill for water on county land. Three more wells were drilled, and one looked promising. However, the cost to treat that water makes it economically impossible. We have been doing this work for years now, hoping to find water. In the meantime, we have also been shipping in water to keep the shopping center in business. Next slide. This shows some other solutions for water for Manor. There are community wells at the Nike site, which is about seven miles to the west of us, and out Sunnybrook to the south. If a community well were available in the area, Manor Center would be a willing participant. Plus, there is Lock Raven Reservoir to the south. Next slide. Which brings us back to why we are here today. If the county ever makes the water from Lock Raven or another public supply available to Jacksonville, Manor Center needs the W three designation so we can enjoy the same rights as our neighbors. We respectfully request that you designate Manor Center W three and turn this whole area blue. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? None. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Turn it.
How often would you say you have to ship in water, excess water into the site?
We used to be sensitive to droughts all through the years. And if Fourth of July, when we overtaxed our wells, you know, we'd burn up pumps. So we were sensitive when we brought it in then. But we had a one, a hundred and thirty thousand gallon tank that held all the water on site from nineteen seventy-eight. When that tank started failing, and I mean, this was the kind of tank you had to have Navy divers come in and patch. It started failing to such a degree, it was a health ass, health problem. The other situation was we took money and reinvested in the infrastructure, and when we upgraded, we had to separate domestic water from fire. So we have two tanks now. When we separated the water and and used two tanks, we have not been able to agree with the state on what type of treatment is needed for the water. They it's way beyond, we're not grandfathered into what used to be. They want us to clean to the nth degree. So we're kind of at a stalemate. So we've been shipping in water since for the last four years. At our cost, our tenants contribute, but we've been paying two-thirds of the cost.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we will hear regarding petition twenty-five oh three for eighty-four hundred Park Heights.
Thank you. Steve Warfield from Mattis Warfield Consulting Engineers. Thank Andrew for making my life easy and the county comments for making my life easy. But basically, I just wanted, I think the record speaks for itself. This is the this is the property up on the plan, on the plan on the wall here. In nineteen forty-three, prior to nineteen forty-three, the property was owned by the Kaiser family. It was a summer estate, and then after that, it was owned by the Holy Trinity Congregation. It was a seminary, a school for training. In nineteen fifty-five, the main U-shaped building was built, which we call the the central education facility. And the school, the current school, Masiv de Caser Tora, purchased the property in two thousand and twenty and moved in. They did extensive renovations and brought things up to code. And they currently have about ninety-five students in the high school, and they have a capacity of about a hundred and ten. And they also have capacity for sixty future undergraduate students for above above high school education. And there's forty, there's forty dorm students that live on the property during the school year, dormitory students. And they basically, you know, they're looking at their septic system, which was put in in nineteen eighty-one, forty-four years old, and they want to be proactive and try to get ahead of this because they know at some point they're going to have to replace the septic system or connect to the sewer. And as Andrew said, they're already connected to public water. They've been connected to the public water for twenty-five years. And I think that's pretty much it. That's all I really wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on this project? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now call upon those who have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order that you registered. Please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Also, provide your name and the organization you represent, if applicable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Our first speaker is David Palmer, speaking on issue twenty-five oh two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is David Palmer, and I'm president of the Greater Jacksonville Association, a community organization which covers generally the area around Jacksonville, Phoenix, and part of Baldwin. And with regard to petition twenty-five oh two to change the water designation from W seven to W three for the property located at thirty-four ninety-nine Sweet Air Road, which you just heard, the G J A opposes the petition and concurs with the recommendations of the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works and Transportation to not change the water designation from W seven. They say don't change it. Rather than go into a lot of detail, we will adopt their opinions. These departments noted in part that the property is located outside of the urdle. As Farley said, three miles. That would be a lot of piping, and outside of the Metropolitan District, so it has neither. Petitioner notes that the surrounding properties are W three, and in their filings, it said this confirms the county's recognition that the public supply of water is the only practical solution in the zone. We respectfully disagree with that. The W three designations for those properties came, it appears, between early nineteen eighties to the mid nineteen eighties, when there was an Exxon spill, and they receive the W three designations. It's been more than forty-five years, and the county government has not authorized public water to be brought to this area, and there's reasons why. And listening to the. to this area. And there's reasons why. And listening to the presentation, Ms. Farley, which is always very good, we note really two things. They want public water brought in. They want the county government, or the residents and/or the residents, to pay for it. And we're talking probably millions of dollars. Jacksonville is a rural residential area. It has a small rural commercial village center. And if there's anything that probably unites most of the individuals in this area, is they don't want public water, because that would change the character of the community. We're talking about generally increased traffic, increased population density, potential overcrowding of public schools, significant increase of the cost of construction, and the residents would then have to pay water bills, which of course, they don't have to pay right now.
Can you conclude your two minutes or up?
And I was just going to say, therefore, we respectfully request that the planning board leave the W7 designation the same. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Next up, we have Ms. Renee Hamidi on petition 2503.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to speak about petition 25-03 to change the water and sewer designations at 8400 Park Heights Avenue. If public water was extended at some point, then the water designation should be changed to reflect that. The Metropolitan District has been charging the property residential rates. As a school, the property is supposed to be considered commercial, so I hope that also is updated. As for changing the sewage plan designation, I ask you to deny the request. To reclassify a property, you must find that there has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, or there's a danger to public health, or that the last classification of the property was established in error. No information has been submitted that indicates any of those things are true. Accompanying the application is a letter to DP Deputy that says in part, "The existing systems are functioning properly but will need to be replaced at some time in the future." Then it says, "The septic system is 44 years old and is approaching the end of its useful life." Later, it says, "The requested amendment is justified warranted based upon the danger to public health of the near-term projected failure of the septic system on the site." But no information that indicates failure is imminent was submitted. In fact, the Department of Planning, in its comments, says current owners did not file for a change of use permit when they took over the property in 2020. So there has been no recent evaluation of the septic system to determine its functionality or adequacy to serve the proposed use. This, to me, is analogous to someone who lives in a house that isn't served by public transportation, so they need a car to get around. And the car's getting older, and they don't want to repair or replace it. So they want public transportation extended to their house. The owners haven't made the case for being connected to public sewer. Approving the request would set a bad precedent for property owners who want to avoid repairing or replacing their septic systems and have sewer service instead. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Kathy Wolfson on issue 2501.
Hello, my name is Kathy Wolfson. I am representing the Greater Patapsco Community Association, the boundaries of which include the property petition by the Randalls Town Islamic Center, also known as RIC. We oppose petition 25-01. The planning board must address the following in determining the petitioner's request. Substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. There has been virtually no new development on Windsor Mill Road or Rice's Lane since the purchase of the property in 2015. Danger to public health. The risks the petitioner describes have been created by their selection of a property that is inadequate for their growth. The existing structure, a single-family home, has been downhill from adjacent wells since the house was built in 1960. Municipal fire protection is not required for public health for houses of worship, as evidenced by the proliferation of those institutions outside the Yurtle. Precedents in planning integrity. The existing RC6 zoning was in place nearly 15 years before the petitioner's purchase of this site to accommodate their, at that time, 500 members. This alleged hardship is self-imposed by their growth in excess of what the site can support. In fact, this is RIC's fourth site since its founding in 2000. The petition states RIC has been developing in phases, and their request for W6 area of future consideration indicates that this petition is not for existing needs but for future growth. The petition for Sewage S1 for sites where sewage facilities are presently available, that 90% of the properties, all of which are inside the Yurtle. Indeed, in 2021, the Development Review Committee determined RIC met a limited exemption as a minor development for construction of a 5,000-square-foot classroom and gym. And that exemption was granted with all agencies aware that the property was and would be served by well and septic. This is clearly a bid for future growth, not to support current usage. The Yurtle must not be negotiable for a lack of vision on the part of the petitioners.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Greg Morgan on petition 2502.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and just thank you for your service to Baltimore County Insurance Smart Growth in the county. I'm here today in support of 25-02, the change in designation for 3499 Sweet Air Road. I am an independent property owner's representative for various businesses throughout Baltimore County, Baltimore City, helping guide them through the processes that are involved in renovating a space, building an addition, or whatever it may be. And one of the biggest challenges that I am involved with is helping to navigate through the complexities of county and state regulatory licensing and permitting processes. And I have been working with my inner associates for the last year or so. And I'm here to support this. This isn't an ask for designation to promote development. This is to sustain a community center that has served this community for almost 50 years. It's the center point of commerce in that area. And as the petitioner stated, it, a lot of the businesses are locally owned. And they have made an effort, privately made an effort, to get water from wells. They've drilled 23 wells unsuccessfully. They've drilled wells, the county has worked with them in drilling wells on county property. And the issues with the groundwater is substantial for the whole area. And when you look at the map and the fact that the area is singled out, it's just not fair. And it's going to create a hardship, a continued hardship for these folks, for the businesses, and for the community should this not exist anymore. So for those reasons, I ask that you support the petition. And we can work collaboratively with the agencies, the county agencies, to come up with how this plan may work in the future. We're pleased with that, where they say, you know, we're going to, you know, do a feasibility study. So for those reasons, I ask that you support this. Thank you.
And finally, we have Al Petriva on petition 2501. Al, with Rick? Is there anyone that signed up to speak that I have not called? Okay, maybe he left. And that concludes our speaker list.
Thank you. At this time, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Array?
Yeah, yes.
2502.
I don't remember your name. So what I hear from you is that economic impact, right? That there is, that your area has been deprived of growth because of war? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. We're part of the Jacksonville Association. We live under the zoning of Jacksonville. There is no big growth. I mean, there's a small commercial area, and we're going to keep it that way. I don't know if we can go back to the slides to show you where Exxon happened, okay? Yeah, I can figure it out here. Okay. Right at the intersection, that corner, Exxon dropped 26,000 gallons of gasoline in 2006. They are still there. They're closing up, and now they want to sell the property, okay? In 1985, Exxon spilled there. And there was a plan put, the planning department looked into getting a community well set up. There was a huge file, because they knew it was a health problem. At the same time, if you remember, the Nike site, there was a contamination there. It seems to be competing things. If you look through the file, they considered, they looked at everything that needed to be done, and they made a decision at that point, the county did not, to invest in it. When Exxon had the 26,000 spill, the state took, and I might be, like $5 million, and released Exxon based on their cleaning up the area, okay? They didn't say build a community well, which would have been the way to do it, because no one talks about it. But most of those businesses ship in water. Food uses is what everybody wants there. If you have a food use, even, I mean, we've been water stored for, you know, 50 years, water-saving devices, all that. We're very careful. And, I mean, they do it under the cloak. We know, because we have trucks brought in, and the guys that bring the water in have told us where else they've gone. So nobody talks about it. I never went public, because it devalues your property if you don't have water. I didn't want anybody to know that, until it became, you know, obvious. If Exxon's going to walk now, they at times were taking out 96,000 gallons a day they were permitted to take out, where they're trying to suck out that 26,000 gallons. So the water is there. There is actually wells there that are built. I would love the county to step in and say, "Okay, Exxon, you got water. You have a well deep into the aquifer." And I think there's a big aquifer down there. Obviously, they didn't want it to be spoiled. Why don't we hold their feet to the fire and say, you know, "Take care of this county"? I mean, there is a template. If you want to, you know, go to the county and say, you know, "Let's do something to protect this area." I mean, it's a wonderful area. And people worry that, you know, it's outside the Yurtle, and it's going to be big growth. It's not going to be big growth. I mean, Mr. Palmer told you that there's an overlay. Jacksonville Community Association says it's rural. Nobody wants to, you know, nobody wants to build there. Did I answer your question?
What is the view of the planning department?
Planning department says it's outside the Yurtle.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I mean, you said at one point, if I'm understanding you, that it was zoned W3, and then it went to W7. So did you inquire from the planning board, or the commissioners, as to what happened?
I went through, who knows what happened in COVID? If you go back and look at the triennial reports and the drafts and all, I don't know when it dropped off. I mean, it could have been inadvertent, you know, GIS moving a, I'm trying to not get paranoid. I hope it's not us. I don't think it's us. I think it's inadvertence. I think it's an error. And literally, I had, I didn't even, I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't even know there were these cycles. And a young man who was looking, I was trying to do something, a young man who's very gifted with the computer, he's just cycling through, he's doing something for me, says, "Did you know about this?" I was like, "No." We learned about the water and sewer a week before the May 1 deadline. And we worked hard. I mean, the hydrogeologist put that packet together, which was wonderful, because we spent a lot of time doing data collection. And what can we do with what, because we're limited, it's 13.65 acres. Any water we come in, this is when you had asked a question about cleaning, why we shipped water in, we bring, even if we had wells that worked. The state is now requiring us to clean the water to such a degree that the only system that might work is RO, reverse osmosis, which means for every, you know, gallon of drinking water you get, you have to have a gallon to flush and clean. So it's, even if I get enough water to work, you know, to operate the center, I can't flood my, you know, there's not enough to clean it too. So the county's been great, saying, you know, trying to give the state, "Listen, that's unrealistic." The other thing is, no offense, nobody's drinking water out of anything at Manor, because across the street, all the neighbors know that there's Exxon spillage. Nobody's putting his or her mouth under the faucet in the bathroom and drinking the water. It's just not done. So, you know, I don't know. I ramble on. I don't mean to do that. Anybody else?
Mr. Hittin?
So, just want to make sure I understand the situation. So the homes in blue can use more, have a higher water allowance, because they're W3, right? So this is public, they have public water?
No, none of this. No public water at all. They are part of, if water comes, and what we hope is, if a plan comes around, if everybody sits at the table and says, "Let's get a solution to this problem," because it's going to affect the viability of the area, you know. They were, as we were, damaged, I imagine, in 1985, the first Exxon spill.
Right.
If Mr. Palmer says this was, you know, there was a map back in 1985, which I found, we were part of it then. We were damaged too. And so that may be it. It could be, it could be who's damaged in the 2006 spill.
Okay, no, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, they may have water delivered by Exxon.
So then where you guys are at at Manor Center, the concern from the community is that you would be the missing piece to bring in this?
No, the concern for me is, if everybody's at the table deciding on a solution, you know, W3, we're going to talk about it and maybe study it. They're going to be at the table, because I have more data on this than anybody. The community reads, "They want public water. They want public water." And they start getting very upset that we're going to be, you know, doing a pipeline from Lockraven all the way up. That's not the only kind of solution. A community well is a solution. A community well that just takes care of the commercial area is probably what I would say is a good, because everybody that lives around there would like restaurants, you know, that's kind of what they want. But it's, they're bigger water users.
No, I agree. I think it's very concerning that a shopping center cannot, it sounds like I'm playing the Oregon Trail from elementary school. It's kind of embarrassing. But, okay, thank you.
Mr. Tennant?
So if the concern is at a commercial property to get access to water, if it does come, is the issue because you're a commercial property? Is there a reason that ShopRite, just north of you, has it and you do not, because it's a very, obviously, similar use? You guys actually have more small local businesses inside of your property than they do, so why do they have it?
That's a curiosity too. Okay. ShopRite, who, when they built, who knew who was doing the maps then, to be honest? I think ShopRite's been there. It was Kleins, because that was a zoning issue for them to get another restaurant. The center in front is owned by Obrex. They were probably, you know, and they've been a while there. I don't know, I didn't feel right. I'd love them to all. They can all, you know, they can all be blue. I don't have a problem with that. I just couldn't make it for them. This is, this is where Verizon Tower is. There is, you know, why do they need water? I don't, I don't, it's an error, in my estimation. But...
Anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. Thank all of the speakers for your time and attention tonight. If there are no more questions or comments, this concludes our public hearing. As a reminder, the planning board does not meet in August. The board is scheduled to vote on this matter at the next board meeting on September 4, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you all in September.